Engineering Program Year Two, full-time students, $3,000 per semester, up to a max of $9,000[6.65][6.65]$ per student, part-time students, $2,000 per semester, up to a maximum of $9,000 per student. Financial Engineering Program Year Three, full-time students, $4,000 per semester, up to a max of $12,000 per student, part-time students, $3,000 per semester, up to a max of $12,000 per student. Business Programs, Accelerated Part-Time and Full-Time MBA, part-time and full-time Business Master of Science Degree, full-time students, $1,000 per semester, up to a max of $3,000, and part-time students, $750 per semester, up to a max of $3,000 per student. The Public Affairs Master of Science Degree, Corporate Communications, Industrial Organizations, Psychology and Mental Health Counseling Programs, full-time and part-time students, $500 per semester, up to a max of $2,000 per student. These academic excellence fees will provide Baruch's graduate programs with funds to develop student support services that are commensurate with the outstanding academic programs offered. Furthermore, these fees are sufficiently modest that they will in no way eliminate the substantial cost advantages of the Baruch graduate programs. Students will continue to receive Baruch education that is not only of exceptional quality, but that will be also reasonable and financially affordable. The college will administer financial aid to assist those students who cannot afford the increases in costs. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Question?
No. No move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions and answers.
I don't understand what an academic excellence fee is, aside from that one sentence. So could somebody elaborate on it?
Sure. I, you know, I'll try, and President Wallerstein is here as well. But the academic excellence fee, let me first talk about the Master in Financial Engineering. This is a program, it's a three semester program, and because it's a Master of Science in Financial Engineering, due to state law, we have to, we have to charge this rate for the Master of Science program that is charged throughout the university. So for a three semester program, it costs a little less than $12,000 for the students to complete the program. The Baruch Masters in Financial Engineering, quality-wise, is ranked right up there with Columbia. Columbia's tuition for the same program is about $46,000 for three semesters. The average salary of the last graduating class of the Master in Financial Engineering was $95,000. So the students are coming out, they're getting great outcomes, it's a terrific program. By charging this fee, the revenue from this fee will remain in the program, so that students will get even better service than they're currently getting. And as was said in the resolution, as Chair Loda said, the college will provide financial aid for those students from the revenues that will be generated from the fee, to help those students who will have problems going forward with their matriculation.
So it's in addition to the tuition?
Correct.
Judah, let me, let me answer your question very directly. The very last thing I did before I left as president of Baruch was to get the board at that time to approve what I called, in, I guess it was 1997 or so, a Master of Science in Financial Mathematics. They didn't like my, my moniker, so they changed it to Financial Engineering, which is fine. An academic excellence fee basically is an infusion of dollars that enable the faculty and the support staff to give an edge to the students in a very highly competitive world that our students are leaving to participate in. The whole quant world, and I used to train, in a previous life, I used to train those students in taking courses in differential equations, stochastic differential equations and things of that nature, is a very highly competitive program for work. Not only are you getting people trained in finance, but you're getting computer scientists, mathematicians that can't find jobs, physicists especially that can't find jobs. So there is this highly competitive world that these students are going into. I would imagine the money that Professor Wallerstein and his faculty will be using this for is to give the edge to the students and getting them entree into the big financial houses that are hiring these quant people to serve as career advisors, to bring in faculty that we may not be able to pay for through the regular tax levy budget. So all of those things is what I would consider a fee for academic excellence.
So a person pays extra money to get better service?
Better service and an opportunity to get a better job, because they're leaving and they're doing very well. But it's a highly competitive program. I know at J.P. Morgan, where I know a lot of these quant people, they have the pick of the litter from some of the very fine institutions, and the question is, how does Baruch position itself in this very competitive world? And that's what this fee basically is going to be used for.
May I ask a second question?
Yes, sir.
Are there non-resident students in this program?
Yes.
There are some.
Do they pay the same fee?
Yeah, their tuition is different, since they're non-residents, but the fee will be the same.
Question. What are the qualifications for the financial aid, to get the financial aid for the students?
There is no financial aid that is provided by the state of New York or the federal government for people pursuing a degree like this. The financial aid that would be available would be through the resources that the president would make available through philanthropy and other sources of income that come in, and to program those dollars to reduce the burden on students who are highly qualified to get in that program but do not have the financial ability to pay.
I think that the question you asked, it's need-based, basically, and you would determine the need base.
And it'll be a local decision, the college will determine that. You know, for the Master in Financial Engineering, they admit about 30 students per year, so it's a very, it's a very small program, and the college will make those determinations on a need basis, as Trustee Beal said, you know, student by student.
Ready for other questions?
Question.
Comments?
I was calling for the question.
Question, call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Kevin, Casey voted no. The record show. Motion carries. Resolution Item C is a resolution authorizing City University of New York to advise, excuse me, to adopt a revised schedule of tuition charges for students in the Master of Public Administration programs throughout the university effective in fall 2011, and as detailed below in your handout. I will tell you that the resident full-time rate is going from $3,865 per semester up to $4,445 per semester, and proportional increases down the line for part-time and non-resident students, and consistent with what is happening for full-time residents too. The proposed tuition increase is necessary to strengthen the services to students and improve the general quality of the Master of Public Administration programs at Baruch College, City College, and John Jay College. The increased tuition programs will be used solely for the support of the MPA programs to provide scholarships, graduate assistance, and academic program support to create new positions in such areas as career services and academic advisement. The colleges will provide financial aid funding to assist any eligible student, any eligible students who need, who cannot afford the increase in tuition. Again, do we have a motion?
Some will.
Second?
Second.
Questions?
Just the relationship of our resident and non-resident tuitions compared to our competitors throughout the country.
On the, on this program, the--
Just forgive me, in the 1980s, we didn't have this stuff, okay?
It's a very good question. The, on the MPA program, NYU is a little less than $1,000 per credit, it's $992 per credit. Pace University is $818 a credit. Ours for a resident student is three, will now be with this increase if it's approved, $375 per credit, and even for a non-resident, it'll be $695 per credit. So we're still well below Pace and NYU, two schools within the city that do offer this program.
Yes, I'm just concerned about how do we match up to somebody that goes from here to Wisconsin, for example, as a non-resident, compared to what a resident in Wisconsin pays? How do we, how do we rate in this ratio?
The ratio of the non-resident tuition to the resident tuition in New York State is much lower than the ratio of non-resident in Wisconsin to in-state Wisconsin, and it's probably true throughout the country. That ratio is low. We don't charge as much a differential here in New York State as we do in other states. I mean, for example, if you want to go to Berkeley, and you come from New York as a graduate student, and you're not being supported, you're paying a lot more than if we invite somebody from California to study here.
And Trustee, it's one of the things to keep in mind with non-resident rates is, especially for the City University, is that our large proportion of international students also pay the non-resident rate. So the fact that, as in your example, a student coming from Wisconsin deciding, should I stay home or should I come to New York? That's a decision that they'll have to make, looking at what New York charges, what other states charge. An international student's a different decision, it's whether they even come to the United States at all. And so that's something that we've always been very sensitive to, in terms of pushing this non-resident rate issue, is our large proportion of international students. That answer your question?
Well, I was just thinking of a ratio that might benefit our residents.
You're right. It's been, it's been discussed in the state legislature and in the city council recently.
State of Albany as well.
It's a fair point.
It goes directly to us, it doesn't get around to us. That's even better idea. Yeah? Any further questions? Comments? Call a question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Record show, Kevin. Vote no. Item D is a resolution authorizing the university to adopt a revised schedule of tuition charges for students in the Doctor of Nursing Practice Program at Hunter College, in the vector for the fall 2011 semester. The Level One Resident Program Full-Time will go from $3,455 per semester to $5,110 per semester, and a proportional increase for all part-time and non-resident students down the line to Level Two, Three, both for resident and non-residents. The proposed tuition increase provision is necessary to strengthen the academic curriculum and services available to students in the Doctor's Program at Hunter's College, Doctor of Nursing Practice Program at Hunter's College. The increased tuition revenue will be used solely to support the Doctor of Nursing Practice Program, which may include the increase and improved, which may include increased and improved laboratory staffing, student recruitment, and enhancing support for all students, including developing specialty support programs for doctoral students. This increase in funding will be used to improve not only the quality of educational programs, but also the level of student, of student support services. Hunter College will continue to provide financial aid funding to assist eligible New York State residents to afford the increase in tuition. So do I have a motion?
Some will.
Second? Okay. Any questions?
So am I reading this correctly, that it's cheaper to get a degree in financial engineering where the starting salaries are $95,000 than it is to be a nurse, where the salaries are nowhere near that? So clearly, this salary issue is not a reason that we're doing this.
This is a--
This is a doctorate.
This is a doctor.
A doctorate in nursing is not a doctor. She still gets, oh, he, she or he. Still does not--
It's not a doctor, doctor.
It's not a doctor.
That's what my mother would say about me, too.
You're not a real doctor. I only say that because we have to be careful when we justify these fees, that we don't correlate it to the income, the projected income of the recipient. I think we all agree that we're having to backdoor into these fees because we're not, the state precludes us from doing it what is the right way of doing it. And it's not a positive correlation between expected income and the fee and the associated fees. And I hope in the future we'll be able to do the correct tuition, so that we don't have to keep backdooring into it and having to do these kinds of things.
I just could elaborate on what we mean by the backdoor and the role the state plays? Just bring me up to date.
Sure, well, sure. The state law currently stipulates that the tuition rate has to be the same for like degrees. So if it's a Master in Science in Financial Engineering, the item that we just reviewed for Baruch, we have to charge the Master of Science tuition rate across the university, whatever the Master of Science rate is. Same with doctoral programs, doctoral rates have to be the same, and undergrad. We can't, we can't charge differential tuition unless it's for a different degree. So the last item we had, the Master of Public, Master of Public Administration, that is a unique degree, so we're able to charge a different differential rate. And so what Trustee Beal was referring to is, we don't have the flexibility to charge rates based on what the cost of the programs are, or what the outcomes of those programs are, or what the demand is. It's based on the state law that says you have to charge the same rate for like degrees.
And how long does that statute--
Since tuition has been charged at the university, for the last 35 years.
Would anybody know what the standard salary of somebody with this degree is when they get out?
I wouldn't know.
I don't know. This is, this is a new program that was just approved by the Board of Regents at its last meeting, I think it was on May 17.
So there's no economic indicators?
I would imagine that a number of these people would seek an academic life.
So they're going to be paying loans back for--
You know, I don't have to answer what that is.
For the next life.
No, I'm serious, because there is a paucity of nursing faculty across the United States, and many universities would require that somebody has a doctoral degree.
Hope they don't end up having to pay for one of those forever.
Are there any other questions? Call a question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Record show, Kevin. Item E is a resolution authorizing the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the university to purchase Enterprise Library Membership and various electronic resource aggregation services from Westchester Academic Library Directors Organization, also known as Waldo. Where is Waldo? See, I didn't--
The vice chairman did.
It's not to tell Joe not to say it. I can't tell you.
The contract shall be awarded as a single-source contract pursuant to the law and university regulations for a one-year term, July 1/11 through June 3/12, at a cost not to exceed $700,000. The contract shall also include a one-year option to renew from July 12 through June of 13. The cost escalation of such renewal shall not exceed 3% for a not-to- exceed cost of $721,000. Such renewal may also be subject to possible inclusion of new titles available through Waldo. CUNY has previously contracted these services through NYLink, who is also, who is phasing out its operations June of 2011. This contract between the university and Waldo will permit the continuation of the admission criticals university-wide library services. Question isn't, where's Waldo, it's where's NYLink? Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second? Okay. Questions?
Yes.
Sir?
Enterprise Library Membership and various electronic resource aggregation services, a little descriptive, what does that mean?
It provides electronic database services to our libraries, so that our libraries don't have to purchase periodicals, textbooks, that the subscription could be online, and students have access to online information. NYLink used to provide these services, they're no longer doing that. This product from the Westchester Academic Library Directors Organization would be about a, you know, it's fairly similar in terms of the cost, I think it's a 1% increase over what NYLink was charging us. But basically, it's electronic subscription services to all of our libraries across the university can access this contract and use these services.
Like Jstor or Project Muse or, or am I--
It's particularly scholarly.
Yes.
Well, Jstor is--
Jstor. It's like Jstor.
It's like Jstor, and so there's no, it's like a single-source contract, there's nobody in the business?
No, actually, NYLink, when we were informed that NYLink was normally providing these services, at our last meeting, we had contracted with another vendor, OCLC, to provide most of the services, but Waldo provides some other services. So there are other vendors, but these were the two that were selected, OCLC and Waldo.
OCLC.
I was going to answer the question as saying it is an academic version of LexisNexis. It's just an absolute source of block of information, of leading folks to use, and a way to share it and save money, and not just by individual subscription. Any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Final resolution is a resolution authorizing counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the university to license and implement a time and leave software system. Contract shall be awarded on a basis of best value through the most responsive and responsible offer pursuant to law and university regulations. The initial term shall be six years. Contract shall include up to two one-year options for the university to renew in its best interest. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $5 million. Current employee and time, time and leave data at the university is captured by standalone system or manually on timesheets. Licensing a single unified system to capture this data will enable the university to better service faculty and staff. The pricing for the initial term of the contract will include system design and implementation services, and enterprise licensing for an unlimited number of uses, technical support, software maintenance, and a hosting system. The university will integrate this system within its CUNY First implementation program. Do we have a motion? Second? Question?
Yeah. The human resource information system that we have doesn't have a provision that would allow us to develop this type of functionality?
No, but by us entering into this contract and having an automated timekeeping service will be able to interface that with CUNY First. CUNY First payroll system is going up shortly, so it's why the timing for us to do this contract will, will work very well with the CUNY First implementation, and that there'll be, the two systems will interface.
So it has to be a separate system, so it wouldn't, so in other words, you're saying that there is no functionality with the CUNY First system that allows it to--
The CUNY--
Maybe it's like second phase or something, or something like this.
Right. The CUNY First system is essentially a payroll system that is going to be taking payroll data from the state and city and loading it into CUNY First. This is a timekeeping system. Right now, what happens at the university is, all the timekeeping is done on paper. Folks fill out their monthly timesheet, they give it to the person, their officer does the timekeeping, that person goes into the state or city system, depending on whether they're a state employee or a city employee, and enters the information, so a paycheck can be generated. What this system will do is, it'll all be automated, so that folks can enter their time into, you know, an automated system. The timekeeper can, or the manager can check it online, won't have to be any paper, and that then will interface with CUNY First in terms of the actual payroll itself.
Any questions? Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Action carries. Matthew, report on the city and state budget.
Thank you. Okay, I'll start with the state budget first. The, the state budget, the main issue that we had talked about our last meeting was the $40 million in additional tuition revenue that was being generated from a 5% increase that was effective for the spring semester, and the fact that, that this $40 million was not recognized in the state adopted budget for fiscal '12. Hasn't been any resolution to this issue yet. There is a lot of discussion that's going on up in Albany. We've been having a lot of discussions with folks in the governor's office, and both the Assembly and the Senate. There is discussion about the Assembly and Senate each issuing their own rational tuition policy bill very shortly, and so we are still optimistic that this $40 million is going to be resolved at some point. The legislative session, the current legislative session in Albany is going to be ending shortly, I believe on June 22nd, and so it's still to be seen whether the rational tuition policy bills, whether the $40 million issue for CUNY will be satisfied by the end of the legislative session. But if not, we are still confident, and we are being told by folks that we're speaking to up in Albany, that it will be resolved in a positive fashion for CUNY. And so, senior colleges, we are getting ready to issue our allocations for next fiscal year, we should be doing that sometime in the next couple of weeks, certainly by the end of this month, with the assumption that the $40 million will be available to us. And so if we do have any update on that, we'll certainly provide it to you. But as of now, it hasn't been resolved, but we still feel good that it will be resolved in a positive manner for us.
Any questions?
Last week, on a, I think a 10 or 15-minute NPR report in the morning news, Nancy Zimfer was on with Sheldon Silver and a number of people. The impression, I wasn't listening carefully, the impression I had was that the state legislature was approving their SUNY's rational tuition proposal.
No. No. That's, the governor announced in early May, a, an initiative to work with the four university centers at SUNY, at Albany, Binghamton, Buffalo, and Sornibrook. He's making some capital funding available to them, it was an economic development initiative. And at that press conference, the governor announced that he would support a rational tuition policy for the four university centers. However, there's been no legislation that's been voted on for that, and it's our assumption and belief that any rational tuition policy that's put forward for SUNY would also be put forward for CUNY, for the entire systems.
At the end, that Silver, Sheldon Silver, said he was coming around to supporting it if the money would go to the campuses and not go into general funds.
Well, I think, you know, from the legislators, both the Senate and the Assembly, the entire legislators' perspective, things that we've been hearing, not only this legislative session but in the past, is they don't want tuition increases-- but in the past, is they don't want tuition increases to be used for gap filler by the state. They don't want there to be a reduction in state aid and tuition rates to cover that. And that's something that we've certainly supported throughout our compact initiative. We want tuition increases to go for the betterment of the campuses.
What you heard were really two, two separate meetings. One led by the University of Buffalo, the following week led by Stony Brook University. And the people who participated not only included the governor and some of his staff, but the president of the University of Buffalo, the chancellor, Shelley Silver, Dean Skelos, a variety of other people. The rational tuition policy that Matthew mentioned a moment ago, what they were really talking about was an enhanced tuition schedule for the four university centers above a base that would apply to both CUNY and SUNY. We're running out of time, but I'm, I want to support what Matthew said. In my own conversations with Shelley Silver, with Deborah Glick, with Ken Laval, with the very top people in the governor's office, everybody believes that our forty million dollars is eventually going to see the light of day. I think what's holding it up is that our forty million is yesterday's game, not tomorrow's game. Tomorrow's game is the rational policy that we have been talking about in this administration for eleven years. And hopefully, if there is enough momentum, we'll see that done before the end of session. But it's, it's getting very close.
I just have one question. If the forty million dollar issue is not resolved by the end of session, what then happens?
They'll be back in session in the early fall, in September.
And they can work on it then?
Yes. And again, if it is resolved in early fall, you know, that'll be sufficient for us. And like I said earlier, our assumption in allocating dollars to our colleges for this year is that we will have the forty.
It makes budgeting at the campus levels almost impossible, because it'll be in the first semester, in the fall semester.
You know, I have been briefed, obviously, by our budget people and approved, as of, I guess it was what, two weeks ago, Matthew, when you met with me, a series of reductions across the university. Embedded into that was the assumption that we will have the forty million dollars, and there's still going to be cuts. There's going to be cuts in the central administration, there's going to be cuts in release time throughout the university, there's going to be cuts in off-balance-sheet stuff, there's going to be cuts to the campuses' operating budgets, because independent of that forty million dollars, we still face about a hundred and thirty-five million dollar problem. About ninety-five million of that is the latest cut, but there are cuts that we still need to deal with from the previous year. So, we'll be able to manage it, because we started planning for this probably in very early two thousand and eight, when we really saw the potential for the very deep recession that we've slowly climbing out of. But while I think we'll be able to manage this by keeping stability in the university, having another cut on top of what we've already seen will cause very, very different decisions that would have to be made at the university. But as of now, with the forty million dollars, I think, good eventually, we're still going to have, you know, serious cutbacks in the university that will be felt on campuses in a variety of ways. So I just don't want to indicate that the picture is very rosy and has been solved. Instrumental here is our ability to generate revenue through tuition. You cannot have an organization that continues to grow, have expenses as a result of that growth, and not have revenue to offset some of those expenses. So you're really caught in a vice here, and that's why we're pressing so hard, along with SUNY, to try to get the legislature finally to advance a policy of tuition that will result in small incremental changes, not these large swings that we've seen in the past. And I'm hoping that it will happen, but it's still not done.
Yes, Valerie.
And Jay's the master of public relations, but I was wondering, you know, everybody knows that the mayor is considering cutting six thousand teachers, and everybody's really, you know, whether that's real or not real, but they're rallying around, don't get rid of the six thousand teachers. Is there, but I don't see that same kind of fear or concern about which is equally as important as the university system. Is there some communication that we can do that doesn't alarm, but doesn't make it sound like we're okay?
Well, there was a city council hearing this past Friday, and at eleven o'clock, there was a significant number of students and faculty that gathered outside of, I guess it's the old immigrant, you know, savings bank building across the street from Tweed, because the hearings are not being held at, in the council chambers due to renovation. And there was a, there was a very large number, and the hearing itself, there was a very, very big turnout of people at the hearing. Of course, at the same time, the firefighters' union organized its rally, and as is invariably the case, it's a very competitive environment. However, that being said, the attendance at the city council hearing, which is where the action is for us, was very strong. And the chair of the committee, Dominic Rekia, heard the testimony of the chancellor, almost all of the presidents were there, students, faculty. I'm talking about a very large room that was extremely full of members of the university community. All the colleges were extremely well represented, and it was a good two-hour hearing, and the focus obviously was the university's budget with special emphasis on the community colleges, as well as the programs that were seeking restoration for. You know, in this environment with layoffs of teachers and closings of firehouses, you know, one has to keep one's focus more on the council members directly, and our strategy has been, if you go to www.supportcuny.org, that our strategy has been to be number one in terms of communications with council members during this process. And I mean number one. In other words, not, you know, not number ten in terms of email communication and, you know, visits to council members. And we are holding strong in the number one position. I think we have to do that through the conclusion of the budgetary process, and the next phase is the follow-up that occurs after the hearing. Our focus is on working with the council. The mayor was at McRevis College this past Saturday. He had a very, very good reception there. I must say that, just in talking with him there, his focus is the issue of the teachers and the line in the sand that's been drawn and the negotiations, obviously, that are taking place. So I frankly advise that we continue our work with the council and make that our focus.
Thank you.
Valerie, I've been involved in, not directly, but two protests by virtue of they've been blocking my car. I've got to admit, faculty, I think the faculty PSC is well represented in numerous different events that are trying to influence members, but as everyone said, with the other cuts that are on the table, they're taking higher priority.
Thank you.
Yes?
Numbers have never been my great strength, but this is what I have been told of late. There's something like a six percent increase in enrollment expected, particularly in the comprehensive and community colleges. In several of the colleges, the department chairs have been told they're getting a thirteen percent cut in their budget for next year, and that they're to let go adjuncts and college assistants, which seem to be the first group since they're not full-time faculty. The result is, if you take these two sets of factori, the size of classes is going to go up, and so as class sizes go up, given the problems our students have, graduation becomes even more difficult for them. Because as a faculty member, there are still only twenty-four hours in a day, even if half of the work one does is online at night, around the clock. And I don't know how one expects an increase in graduation rates under these circumstances. This is not a new event. I've lived through this now for forty-five years in CUNY episodically. I just think it should be understood that if we're going to get rid of adjuncts and we can't grow the full-time faculty, then we're going to have larger classes and perhaps less success.
I would, I would seek a better communication with respect to numbers, whoever feeding in these numbers. If we had a thirteen percent reduction to the senior colleges, I think our presidents would go into atrial fibrillation. There's nothing near that at all.
I said that the chairs of some departments were told.
But they're totally misinformed, unfortunately.
Well, they're being told by their own administration.
Well, I don't think anybody is talking about thirteen percent reductions. That would be, you know, that would be a very different situation than we're actually facing. We'll be okay on going forward this year. If we take further sustain, if we have further cuts, then that's a very different situation.
Gerald, if I can, I also want to take a few moments to talk about the city budget.
Yes.
Because since the last time we all met, the mayor issued his executive budget for fiscal twelve. You all have in your packets the analysis that the university issued and that the chancellor sent to all of the trustees two weeks back. I'm not going to go through specifically analysis, but I want to talk about some of the numbers that are contained in the executive budget, and also talk about some of the issues with lobbying efforts that Vice Chancellor spoke about. So just to go back to the mayor's preliminary budget for fiscal twelve. When the mayor issued his preliminary budget, he asked for budget reductions for all agencies. For CUNY, our number was sixteen million dollars for our community colleges as a reduction for next year. In the executive budget, there was an additional cut to all agencies, and CUNY's portion of that was seven point six million. So we were looking at twenty-three point six million dollars in new reductions. In addition, there is twenty-one point four million of prior year cuts that the city council put back in this year's budget as a one-time addition. It's not there in fiscal twelve, it's only in fiscal eleven. So those funds drop out, and so we're looking at about forty-five million dollars in reductions at the community colleges. Now, keep in mind, at the community colleges, we do have the maintenance of effort protection, which says that the city must provide the same level of funding to the community colleges in one fiscal year as they did in the prior year. The maintenance of efforts shortfall right now, as of the mayor's executive budget, is about twenty point two million dollars. Because even though we have this forty-five million in cuts, there are additions for mandatory cost increases, fringe benefits, for pension costs, building rentals, and the like. And so that offsets the forty-five million in cuts when calculating the MOE. And so, the MOE shortfall is about twenty point two million dollars. And so, when the budget is adopted between the mayor and the city council, twenty point two million dollars has to find its way back into CUNY's budget. So that, that's some protection that we have. In addition, the council has always been very helpful to the university at adoption, and we're certainly expecting support again from the councils, as Vice Chancellor Husham said, that chance to test fund on Friday, and there was a great level of support from the council, and we've been meeting with the council finance division, so we do expect some level of help. As Jay pointed out, with twenty firehouse closings and six thousand teacher layoffs, there are some heavy lists that they have to do this year, but we do expect them to be supportive again to the university. And one other thing I want to point out about the community colleges is that unlike on the state side, the mayor has recognized the five percent tuition increase from the spring semester, and that's been baseline in our budget going forward, and so that'll offset some of these cuts. But we definitely have concerns about the community colleges. Not only do we have city cuts, but the state adopted budget cut aid to the community colleges by ten point six million dollars. And so, you know, we are again concerned about the community colleges going forward. The city budget will be adopted hopefully sometime later this month, and it has to be adopted by June thirtieth, but hopefully it'll be sooner rather than later. But once it's adopted, we'll be finalizing our allocations to the community colleges and sending those out. But again, like the senior colleges, because we are going to have city reductions, and we know we already have state reductions, there will be some reductions that we'll have to do to the community colleges this year as well.
Any questions? Thank you, Matthew. Now we have a report from the chief investment officer.
Thank you. In the, in the term.
Included in the package were the detailed memo on our performance overall.
In the remaining time that we have, I'll just briefly summarize the performance for the calendar year-to-date through April. And Mark Fowler from Cambridge Associates is going to speak to a recommendation to further diversify our domestic equity portfolio and set the stage for our next meeting in September. If you turn to page three, as they say, a picture speaks volumes, and this shows that the CUNY investment pool is beating ninety-five percent of its endowment peers. And I'm told that now that the pool universe has reported, it has changed slightly to ninety-three percent of our endowment peers. So, so we're really pleased on a calendar year-to-date basis through April that the pool is doing so well. And if you turn to page seven, it shows the various asset classes and the composite returns in bold. And as you can see, all of the, all of the composite asset classes from U.S. equity, international equity, emerging markets, hedge funds, real assets, and fixed income have all produced positive returns for the month, for the calendar year-to-date through April, and for the trailing twelve months. So as not to linger too much on this, because I know we're running out of time, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Fowler, who will discuss the specifics of the recommendation on domestic equity.
The specific recommendation is contained on page eleven of the handout. And just a bit of brief background about your structure. As we were prioritizing where we wanted to get diversification within the investment program, we had prioritized some of the investments outside the U.S., so non-U.S. equity, getting some exposure to, excuse me, alternative assets. One gap that currently exists in your program structure is exposure to the small-cap U.S. equity market, and we think this is a gap that should be filled, and so what we're recommending is going ahead and investing twenty percent of your U.S. equity target, which is roughly eight million dollars, in a Vanguard Extended Market ETF, which provides exposure to small and mid-cap, the small and mid-cap U.S. equity market through a passive, remanaged ETF. Over the long term, we might consider moving to active management in this space, thinking that small-cap equities and mid-cap equities are an area where active managers have traditionally added value. Our, for the near term, we're recommending get the passive exposure, and at some point in the future, we may bring to an active recommendation. But that's the active, that's the recommendation. You know, I should acknowledge that small caps are trading at a premium for large-cap equities right now, so there is a little bit of price risk, but these things are hard to time. You can also get back to equilibrium, so to speak, through stronger earnings, not just through price movements, so we're recommending going ahead and making that change. Index fund. So you're replicating the index.
If you're not actively, then.
Why don't we take, why don't we, this proposal to, to the investment committee? No, let's go to the next investment committee.
Right. We'll vote, we'll be voting on it at the next investment committee, not today.
Any more questions? Great. Thank you all.
Can we please ask trustee Gill, trustee Wilber, and vice chair Barry to come to FSA?